You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
I'd like to welcome you to the October 28 Fayetteville City Council meeting. At this time, we would ask that Reverend Dwight Palmer from Mount Eland Baptist Church if he would come to the podium and lead us in our invocation. Ask that all would stand for the prayer. At the conclusion of the prayer, if you could stand, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll repeat that in unison. And we will have our very own, the new United States citizen, Ms. Tracy Broyle, who was sworn in today as a U.S. citizen, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All minds and hearts clear, let us pray. Most gracious in heaven and Father, again, we come to give you praise and glory. And Father God, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion and debates. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace and mercy, Lord, as we make decisions that affect the people of this city. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, thoughtfulness, and right speech. These prayers and all other prayers we ask in thy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Reverend Palmer? If you would, please, sir, and Ms. Tracy, don't get too far because we're going to have you tell everybody what's going on with you. But Reverend Palmer, tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry. I've been knowing you for a long time, but tell others.
Been a Fayetteville resident since I got stationed here in 1982. Been loving the city. Been a member of Enso Fellowship is where I came on board at in 96 and become a minister in 2007. And just recently got put over at Mount Eland Baptist Church. So it's just God is still good and he's still on the throne regardless of what's going on. He's got it.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight, sir. And Ms. Broyle? Tell us a little bit about what's happening in your world today.
Well, last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to swear citizenship for the United States from my home country of Canada.
From your home country of?
Canada.
Canada. All right. Well, welcome and thank you. We've known, if all of you don't know, Ms. Tracy runs our finances and keeps us physically sound and responsible here. But thank you for, and congratulations. At this time, I will turn over to Councilmember Jensen for some very important announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have Alexandra DeVille from Southview. She is with our Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and she is a junior, and she's going to give us an update on this great weekend we have and what we have looking forward to in the future.
My name is Alexandria DeVille. I'm currently a junior at Southview. I'm here to talk to you about what has been happening with the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. On Monday, October 21st, we had our fifth official meeting. There, we discussed our upcoming All-American Jazz Festival and finished all of our planning for the event. Yesterday, October 27th, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, along with the Sand Hills Jazz Society, hosted the All-American Jazz Festival, which was a success. During this festival, we had five different jazz bands perform and multiple people were there to watch and listen to the soothing sounds of jazz. Our sixth official meeting will take place on Monday, November 4th. Thanks.
Well, thank you for joining us. And at this time, I will also go back to Councilmember Jensen for special recognition. Councilmember Hare, did you have something you need to say?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate just a little bit what the young lady said. We had a very, very, very successful, from my perspective, jazz concert over at the park. My beautiful wife and I and many, many others, I said about 3,000, came out and enjoyed the jazz festival. People had a great time, grateful. So for the first time, I think we did very well. Fayetteville, we did very well. We ought to be very, very proud, and hopefully it'll be even better the next time.
Great. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could get the members of the St. Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church to come down and meet the mayor and our own Lexi from PWC is part of my church. I don't know if everybody knew that, so we're expecting her to come join us. So this morning, I woke up and it is a very, it is a big holiday for the Greek, the country of Greece today. And I thought, I woke up on a Monday, and what a great day that I was here at the city council and called, texted the mayor and the city manager and asked if we could do a proclamation, and they said absolutely. So I would like to thank y'all for doing that for us. So, and we have Father Alex here with us, our father of our church. So I'm going to proceed with the proclamation. Whereas Ohi Day, October 28th, 2019 commemorates the events of Greece in 1940, which the brave Hellenic nation boldly stood together for liberty and freedom at all cost against their allies. And whereas the historical statement "Ohi," a reference to defiant "no" in Greek, played a pivotal role in the ultimate victory. And whereas Ohi Day is inspiration to those who cherish democracy and freedom, whereas the Greeks faithfully met their obligation with courage, self-sacrifice, determination, and dedication. Whereas the city of Fayetteville celebrates Ohi Day in honor of the noble heroes, men and women, who fought for the free Greek nation. And in the words, whereas in the words of Winston Churchill, hence, we are not to say that Greeks fight like heroes, but heroes fight like Greeks. And now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Fayetteville, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2019 as Ohi Day in Fayetteville, our city of history, heroes, and hometown feeling, and encourage all citizens to join me in supporting this holiday.
Way to go.
Mayor Mitch Colvin.
I would not have pronounced that word correct, so I've got to work on that. Ohi, right? All right. All right. So item 5.0 is approval of the agenda, Council. I look to you for action.
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
Is a motion by Councilmember Wright, is a second by Councilmember Dawkins to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Councilman Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull item 6.08 on the consent.
Okay. So is that a motion to approve with the exception of that?
Correct.
Okay. So is a motion to approve items, the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.08, is a second by Councilmember Dawkins? Yeah, he presents. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to clarify, I'd also like some discussion on 6.08 after.
Yes, sir. I'll come back to you. All right. Any discussion on the motion to approve with the exception of 6.08? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.08, Mr. Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion to approve 6.08 with the exception of 101 Northeastern Boulevard. This is scheduled for demolition. I'm pulling this simply because the owners of the property have made good faith in renovating that structure. However, despite buying the materials and contracting with their subcontractors, they had some subcontractors not able to meet their deadline. So I would make a motion to approve item 6.08 with the exception of 101 Northeastern Boulevard, with the understanding that staff will work closely with the owners to maintain a timeline.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Cullerton, for motion to approve 6.08 with the exception of 101 Northeastern Boulevard. There's a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion? Councilman?
Yes, sir. Would it be appropriate to assign a timeframe to this motion for staff? Mr. Manager, what would you recommend is an appropriate timeframe?
We'd be happy to come back to council within 30 days with a plan, but I would hope that it'd be able to secure the building within 90 days. But we'll come back with an update.
30 days with a plan, 90 days with resolution?
That would be, and if we aren't able to make that, we'll let council know that as well.
Would you be willing?
I'd be agreeable to amending my motion to reflect the following.
All right, you amend the second? Okay. So we have amended motion on the floor to put a time limit of 90 days, 30 days. Staff will check in with the update. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for your votes. Councilman Dawkins and Waddell?
I'm sorry. I'm talking, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Baptiste. I'm a senior planner with Development Services. I'm bringing before you today case P-19-39F. The applicant is Deborah Cunningham on behalf of Cunningham Properties of Fayetteville. This request is to allow a special use permit to allow an existing.
Ms. Baptiste, give me one second. Madam Attorney, do I need to ask for recusal now or after this?
Yes, if that's still the.
Yes.
And also, Mayor, after that vote, clerk does need to swear all the speakers.
Okay. So you'll take this?
Okay, then the motion would be to excuse Mayor Colvin from participating in this item. All right. Okay, that's the motion. Councilmember Wright?
Second, Mr. Wright's motion.
Okay. So then, Council, take your vote. That's unanimous. Okay. And then we'll need everybody to come to the city clerk's podium and get sworn in.
Mayor Protem, we have two speakers signed up for this item, Ms. Deborah Cunningham and Mr. Tim Cunningham.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you, God? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes. This application was brought forward by Deborah Cunningham on behalf of Cunningham Properties of Fayetteville. The request is to allow an existing funeral home the ability to expand their services to offer crematorium services to the general public. Cunningham Properties operates under the common name of Cunningham &amp; Sons Mortuary. They're located at 3890 Rayford Road, and they're in District 5. To give you a little idea of where the property is located, Cunningham's is located here. To the east of the property is a strip mall as well as the GCF Donation Center. To the west is Grace Memorial Baptist Church. In the northwest corner, you can see Brian Honda across Rayford Road, and the Jiffy Lube is located here to the north. The zoning map shows that this area is predominantly zoned as community to commercial. From the rear of the building to the south is approximately four, there's a separation of approximately 410 feet to the next single-family residential zoning district to the south. The land use map calls for this area to remain as heavy commercial. Here you can see the subject property. This is a view of the property from Rayford Road. Cunningham &amp; Sons has been in business at this location since 1990. They have provided funeral service to the general public. Their license is current and has never been suspended. Although this use requires a special use permit, the UDO does not require any additional development standards for the use. However, this use is heavily regulated by other governmental agencies. The first agency that regulates this use is the North Carolina Board of Funeral Services. This board is required to make sure that all staff of the, of any funeral home or crematorium are currently licensed and trained in order to provide services to the general public. The board also performs site visits to any location. They provide, they perform yearly, yearly site visits as well as random site visits to ensure that paperwork is being properly maintained. The second, the second agency that regulates the use is the Department of Environmental Quality. The DEQ regulates and monitors the air quality for crematoriums, but, and thanks to modern technology, most crematoriums operate efficiently and do not release any emissions into the This is a more detailed view of the area. Again, to the north, this is an insurance agency, the Jiffy Lube. To the west is a strip mall, the GCF Donation Center, and to the east is Grace Memorial Baptist Church. The applicant has provided a site plan. In order to accommodate the use, they are adding on an addition of approximately 925 square feet to accommodate the expansion in services. Planning staff is recommending approval of the SUP. The proposed SUP meets all the requirements for the community commercial district, and the addition of the crematorium service is allowed in the CC district and will not detract from the overall area. The proposed SUP ensures that new development is compatible with the 20,000 land use plan, and there are no other factors which will substantially affect the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Thank you. The applicant is here to answer any question, and staff is also available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I just want to remember, remind all of us on council that with this being a quasi-judicial hearing, our questions must be related to specific items helping each of us make our own individual decisions at the end. I would also, we have one question so far for staff from Councilmember Cullerton. Or Councilmember Dawkins, then Cullerton. I'm sorry. I've got them in order.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Madam Attorney?
Mayor Protem, perhaps it would be better, given that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, to allow those persons wishing to speak to speak as well and then entertain the questions at one time.
A good point, and that's what we'll do, ma'am. So at this point, we will open the public hearing. And Ms., Madam Clerk, would you call the first speaker of the two we have?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Ms. Deborah Cunningham.
Welcome, ma'am.
I'm Deborah Cunningham, the owner and manager of Cunningham &amp; Sons Mortuary. At the current time, we are outsourcing those services for the crematorium, and it would be to our best interest in order for us to keep those services in-house.
Sounds good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Cunningham. Okay. Then we have no further speakers, sir.
And Madam Attorney, we need to keep the public hearing open through the fruition of this item. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, then, since there's no further speakers, we have two from council so far, Councilmember Dawkins and then Councilmember Cullerton.
I had a question, a couple of questions of staff. You mentioned 410 feet to the nearest, I guess, residence? And I was concerned about how far, is there a state regulation about the number of feet a crematorium has to be from a residence?
No, there is no. There's not.
And since they're adding nine, approximately 900 and some square feet to the building, the stormwater ordinance, I guess, did we review the stormwater ordinance to see if we have to have any additional erosion control measures because of the additional 900 and some feet, square feet?
This item has, the site plan has gone before TRC as a preliminary review, and no comments were made by stormwater. They will have to do an additional technical review with a more formalized plan, and again, stormwater will have the opportunity to see the plans and make any comments or, and just to make any requirements.
And just one more question, Mr. Mayor Protem. It appears behind the building, it's mostly impervious, it's like a parking lot, and that's true. And then it looks like there's little structures behind their building before you get to some houses, unless those are very small residences. I didn't know if those were storage buildings or, looking at the picture. Yes. Okay. In the, yes, yes, those buildings looks like are some kind of structure at the back of their property.
These buildings are on another property. Their property ends here.
Okay. Okay. And that's not some kind of structure at the back of that?
Are you talking about?
Well, that looks like a small structure. I guess there's storage. What I'm trying to do is if they have to create an erosion control measure, they're going to have to go wherever there's dirt and not pavement. And I was just looking for a dirt strip instead of a paved strip. Looks like it's not paved all the way to those structures. All right. Well, if it's got to go through technical review, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Cullerton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Has Cunningham &amp; Sons Mortuary been approved for this location by the other two regulatory bodies that you mentioned?
Yes, they've been approved by the Funeral Board since 1990.
For a crematorium?
Yes. Well, not for the crematorium. They will have to complete this process before they can make applications for the crematorium.
So there is a separate approval for the crematorium, I suppose, right? And then you were saying that this is the first step that they have to go through, and then they will seek approval through those bodies?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Council, do we have any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Hare?
Yes. Ms., Senior Planner, I asked this question during our work session, and I did get some info.
get some information thanks to our city attorney. But when you mentioned about the admissions, and I don't know if you, you're probably going to have to restate what you said, but I thought you said something along the line, the way that it's constructed, or that there's not an issue with admissions. Restate that part about admissions that you stated, please.
Due to technological advances with the incinerators, they do not emit as much into the atmosphere as they used to. It's just like with a car. Advances with your cars, they don't produce as much as emissions as they used to in the 70s or the 80s. So as technology moves forward, they're releasing less and less emissions into the air. The applicant is proposing to get a smoke-free incinerator that will not release any emissions into the atmosphere, or if they do, if it does, it'll be at a much reduced rate.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Counsel, any further questions of any of the speakers? Well, then I will, at this time, close the public hearing and entertain a motion. I believe this is District 5.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Would you put the special use permit requirements for the motion back up? Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm going to make a motion to approve the special use permit because all eight findings of fact below appear to have been met. And, Madam Attorney, is there any additional information I need to add to that motion? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dawkins. I see Councilmember Cullerton's light. Is that a second?
I would second that motion.
Okay, now we have a properly motion, a proper motion, and properly seconded. Counsel, ask for your vote.
You're not going to ask for any discussion?
Well, we already discussed. We already discussed.
I like the way you run stuff.
Trying to say, Johnny. Go ahead and read that out.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, all in favor with Mayor Colvin not participating, being recused.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Senior Planner. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Good luck to you. All right, all right, Counsel. Look for a motion to adjourn. Y'all are bashful about this tonight.
Can we have a discussion phase on that?
Motion to adjourn. Have a good evening.